This would be the time for public comments. If there are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2016 MFT Street Improvement Program.
Thank you. Very quickly, we just received some very favorable bids as part of the MFT program. This is part of our regular resurfacing program and it's, if you'll recall back to the budget process, it's the same projects that we had talked about during the budget process. There are two items. One is a resolution that allows the village to utilize MFT funds, which are actually through the state, for projects like this. The second item is actually the award. We received some very favorable bids to this, for this project. You can see the streets that are listed here. Heggs Road, Pilcher, and Fraser Road are the three areas. They're all good stretches of roadway. And that out of, and I'm kind of jumping to the next item, out of the bids, they were well below the budget and well below the engineer's estimate. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about either or either. And we have Randy Jessen that's here as well to answer questions of the board.
I move that we adopt Resolution 1729, a resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code for 2016 MFT Street Improvement Program.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Not, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
The next item is just the bids related to the...
I move that we authorize the village president to award the 2016 MFT Street Improvement Program Project to Deconstruction Inc., the lowest bidder in the amount of $851,402.65.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I just had a couple of questions. Sorry. On the report, it talks about, just from my learning, it talks about the village received five bids, but six bids proposals were issued prior. So does that mean six went out but only five came back? Is that what that means?
That's correct. One of the bidders chose not to bid. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And then, part of it talks about, I think, 135th Street. I think at one point was there discussion, I know we had the traffic calming measures discussion in some meetings regarding Meadow Lane, and I know there's some traffic calming on 135th in this section. Was there any discussion, or should there have been more discussion about what the future of those improvements or those controls look like?
Initially, several years ago, the village completed a study, an internal study, related to traffic and speeding and things of that nature along Pilcher Road, and it was the board's direction to install, along with the support of the community too as well, to install the traffic calming measures in those areas. As part of the reconstruction, the traffic calming measures will be reinstalled, very similar to the configuration that you have now, with the exception that they will be more uniformed. That's one of the issues, is that some of the speed tables are actually higher or lower than others. So the goal is to make them uniformed and make them work in the way that they were intended, and that is to keep people at or below the speed limit within that area. So as part of the resurfacing, it is grinding and a resurfacing, but as part of that, the traffic speed tables will be reinstalled as part of this project.
Okay. So it's going to be consistent with what is there today?
That's correct. And consistent with board direction and the traffic studies that we've completed in the past.
Perfect. No, I don't know what, when you say to do its work, so I guess maybe I'll just ask for a little clarity. I know some people use them like as stop signs. I try to just maintain a steady speed through them, and it seems to work pretty well, which I'm assuming that's the intent, is to maintain a steady speed under the 30 mile an hour or at the 30 miles an hour speed limit?
Yeah, the intent is to keep the drivers' motorists at or below the speed limit. That's correct.
Thank you. And then lastly, it talks about the individual pavement condition number. So is that kind of like the ranking on that study that we had done five years ago?
That's correct. And what we had done with the study before is had projected, based on the values that the pavement had at that time, projected that all the sections would degrade to a certain rate. So this section with the traffic volume and the rating that it had five years ago is in need of replay or resurfacing at this point. That's correct.
How would you classify those? I mean, is there actually a number, or is it just poor, good, or excellent or something?
It would rank, if we were going to have it ranked today, it would be in the fair to poor range. But what's problematic is we're starting to see potholes and things of that nature, and that even makes the pavement degrade even quicker.
Thank you.
Alan, you have a timetable on when this will start, when it will be complete, and if there is any set order in which the projects are going to go?
We anticipate that the contractor will start within the next two to three weeks in that range, and the completion is in the two-month range at the most. Our intent is to have the contractor here for this particular project and have him focus on this project. It's going to take him about two to three weeks to complete the roadways in all the sections. So, but we'll keep the residents in the area prized as to our progress related to it. Sure.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not. The motion was made and seconded to award the 2016 MFT Street Improvement Program Project to Deconstruction, the lowest bidder, in the amount of $851,402.65. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the special meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
A call to order, the committee of the whole, roll call please.
Trustee Benucci?
Here.
Trustee Lamb?
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Here.
Trustee Peck?
Here.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wojkowski?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole workshop held on August 8th.
So moved.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Presidential comments?
Have none.
Trustees' comments?
Have one. We have a lot of new people on the plan commission and new staff arrangement. I'd like to see us have a workshop where the plan commission meets with us and so we can all get on the same page again. So I would suggest that we have a joint workshop again. There's so many new things. There'll be two new people, and you've taken over for Michael and Jake is new. So I think it might be good to just have a dialogue between the two organizations and come to some understanding of what we're trying to do, what we expect from them, and what they expect from us, so.
Are there any other trustee comments?
Sorry, I had a question probably for Alan again. It's, I had somebody ask me about Essington Road south of 135th there to 126th. Is that our jurisdiction?
Yes.
Do we have any plans? I know there's been some, not necessarily, I guess, potholes, but it's more in the shoulder area, and then also the painting, I think, similar to what happens over at Naperville Plainfield and Route 59 where people don't pull up and it doesn't initiate the sensors, so people are waiting. Any plans for you guys for maintenance or anything out in that area?
We can definitely take a look at it, and of course, it'll be evaluated as part of the pavement survey, but we can always take a look at it as far as our striping program and then look at the timing of the lights as well.
Thank you.
So we'll definitely do that.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not. This would be the time for public comments. If there are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is riverfront park policy.
Thank you. Staff has taken this opportunity to present a draft, kind of a starting working draft of a park usage policy for the Plainfield Riverfront Park. This is initially the area on the west side of the DuPage River, south of Lockport Street. As the board may be familiar, the village does have a usage policy for Settlers Park and for the community rooms here at Village Hall and as well for the multi-purpose room at the law enforcement facility. And so we felt it was appropriate, as identified in the strategic plan as well, to develop a formalized usage policy and a permit process for utilization of the riverfront park. So as a starting point, staff took our existing policies and kind of modified them and modeled this proposed draft for consideration. In staff's opinion, the riverfront does present a few different opportunities than either Settlers Park or the community rooms here or the multi-purpose room at the law enforcement facility. So I'll highlight a couple of those deviations or variations, but in general, the concept is to take what we have for Settlers Park and Village Hall and Law Enforcement Facility and just modify it, you know, as minimally as appropriate for the riverfront property and have somewhat of a unified, uniform policy and permitting process for the park. As I indicated, this is kind of a working draft. We're looking for response and mid-course correction. It hasn't had the benefit of review through the village's legal council, and as well, we've invited input from the Plainfield Riverfront Foundation as they would be one of the primary organizations that's subject to the policy. So it would be staff's intent to take input and comments and direction from the board this evening and come back with a more refined policy, either at a future committee of the whole or at a formal village board meeting for adoption by resolution so that we could implement the usage policy, you know, moving forward. In terms of the policy itself, we kind of define the park area. It is a very broad area. It's approximately 42 acres. Initially, the starting point west of the DuPage River, south of Lockport Street. Primarily open space, as the board's familiar, but there are a few improved areas. The former control building, which has accessible restrooms on the first floor, there's also a commercial kitchen or concession area available that would be an opportunity for potential public use and as well an outdoor patio area with barbecue grills. So there are some amenities that could potentially be of interest and of use to the public, depending on the nature of an event that's proposed for that location. With those improvements, there are also some challenges in terms of making sure that the area is secure and that we protect and have adequate oversight for the use. I know the way the building has been improved currently, the accessible restrooms can be separated and made available to the outdoors without access to the balance of the building, but the kitchen, for example, if a group wanted to utilize the kitchen the way the building is currently set up, the upper floor is not locked or isolated from public use of the kitchen area. So there are some logistics and some finer points that certainly could be addressed in the future. So in the staff memo that accompanied the proposed draft policy, I highlighted kind of three primary modifications from our current policies. The first is that staff anticipates the potential request for use of the riverfront for commercial purposes. Now, this could be something along the lines of a concert potentially. It could be a festival or a fair that has a for-profit nature to it. I know in the past, there have been a handful of events, whether it's Plainfield River Days that we held for a few years, the Midwest Brewers Fest, and it's been held on the riverfront property. While those have been revenue generating, you know, both of those events have been of a non-for-profit nature, but staff does anticipate the potential for a proposed use of a for-profit nature. And this kind of goes hand in hand with a third point I'll touch on, in terms of the fee structure and a potential revenue opportunity for the village that could be accompanied by a potential commercial use. So that's one primary area where staff will be looking for direction, is the board comfortable with the potential for essentially permitted commercial use of the riverfront property that will be accompanied by an associated fee or revenue that's above and beyond simply paying for the cost of our services. The second point that staff felt was worth highlighting specifically is the potential for the use or the service of alcoholic beverages on the riverfront property. I know that's not part of the core of what we offer and what we're proud of here at Settlers Park and so forth, highlighting some of our past uses of the property. Plainfield River Days, initially the first year, there was no beer garden. I believe the second or third year, there was a limited beer garden out of the nature of a Plainfield Fest, but we have on a case-by-case basis recognized the potential for alcoholic beverages on the riverfront property. And obviously with Midwest Brewers Fest, that's specific to that event as well. So while the Settlers Park policy specifically prohibits it, staff felt we could either acknowledge the potential for that, and again, this could be, it does not have to be an open event to the public. It could be a wedding reception. There could be other possible events where the service of alcoholic beverage would be ancillary to the function of the event. And then the third modification that staff is proposing, I think it's not very well laid out, and certainly an opportunity for improvement, is in the nature of how fees are charged. Currently, I think the intent of Settlers Park policy is just to collect the cost of village services, whether it be for a special event, police detail, or so forth, and we'll just plug in that salary rate as it changes over time. Recognizing that if the riverfront property were to host a larger event, potentially a for-profit or a commercial event, there would be an opportunity for the village to charge a, an event fee, for lack of a more refined term. That event fee would be relative to the magnitude of the event and the nature of the event and not specifically an attempt to make the village whole for the cost of our municipal services, whether it be through police or public works. So thinking down the road, if there were a larger event, a concert or something of that nature, you know, is there an opportunity for the village to charge $5,000, $10,000, something that's commensurate with a revenue potential for the event? So staff has at least, you know, planted the seed or began to draft that opportunity. The approach that I've taken, and we've taken, Jake and I have taken with this, is that any larger event, obviously still subject to the villages and the police departments, open air gathering permit requirements, to loudspeaker amplification permit requirements, any event incorporating alcoholic beverages, if the board supports that, would be subject to both our local and state liquor licensing requirements. So there's kind of a, in staff's opinion, a coordinated opportunity to review events on a case-by-case basis and make sure we're comfortable with the nature, whether it be the number of people involved, where the parking will be held, the times of day, and things like that. So those are really the three major modifications or deviations from our current policies, and staff would certainly welcome direction on those three points and any additional aspects of the proposed policy.
John, there's a lot with the riverfront right now. As everyone knows, I've been working closely with the group, and there are a lot of requests. They're getting requests for weddings out there. They're getting requests for the scouts, and there's a few things, I mean, without going through everything, you touched on some of it, where the facilities for the second floor, that's not able to be locked off at this time, so I would take that out of there right, because there's so many priceless artifacts up there and things like that. That would be a lot of responsibility put on someone to secure if, as a renter. And then you mentioned the fees, so that's good that you brought that up too, because obviously that has to be laid out differently for different groups. We've had this request in the past when Midwest Brewers Fest wanted to stay overnight in camp. However, and obviously, we had said no to that, the scouts are using the property to earn badges, and they're staying overnight, so we would need some kind of criteria for if they're going to be able to stay over. I think that's a big part of this. And, I mean, I'm not going to go through every single thing. One of the things that seemed confusing under number 22, you have exclusive use of the park only. I think that has to really be defined of what you're saying, they're actually renting. So if somebody's renting, you have to make it very clear, I think, you know, what their reservation is. And one of the things that also came up was the foundation people would be there, like to get things off the ground. They would sign out keys or whatever if somebody needed to get into the building for the concession part of it. But could they use that, it's kind of like we do at Settlers Park where we use the facility for concessions to raise money. That would be something the Riverfront Foundation is interested in, running some kind of concessions where they could raise funds for the riverfront. And it's also, I think, a great spot for a food truck if, you know, the occasional event that would bring that in. And the other thing was, the other big thing that came up was, how does the security figure it out? Is that the Plainfield Police Department provides that, or do you oversee to make sure the security is in place? And if alcohol is served, that they have the BACs training, all the different things that go on there? That was another one of the questions from the riverfront.
If I may respond to that last question directly. I think the vast majority of events that would be requested on the riverfront property would fall under the village's open air gathering permit at a minimum. And so through, currently through the Community Services Division, we'd have the opportunity to impose or identify what the village's permits are, and if the event were of a nature that it would be appropriate to come forward to the village board, i.e. a larger scale event that would have a potential impact on the community, on traffic. Our approach with this current policy was to minimize overlap, you know, to utilize our existing permit processes as, you know, to the greatest extent we could. All of the property is village-owned property. The building that's there is village-owned property. The Plainfield Riverfront Foundation was formed in 2009. It was formed as an Illinois not-for-profit corporation and attained its 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit status through the IRS shortly thereafter. So its mission is to raise funds and public awareness for the improvement of the riverfront master plan, essentially to implement the riverfront master plan that's been adopted by the Plainfield Village Board and the Plainfield Park District Board of Commissioners. It's under review. I think some of the input we're hearing tonight is from the riverfront, but when we bring a, you know, more complete, a fully developed draft back for consideration, it would have been vetted by the, you know, both the village's legal council and give an opportunity for comment, thorough comment from the Riverfront Foundation. I think the intent is to recognize that there's a lot of potential things going on at the park, and so you have a segment of the DuPage River Trail, which is a regional trail. You have both our Lockport Street pedestrian bridge and the second DuPage River Trail pedestrian bridge crossing Lockport Street, and so the intent of this provision is to recognize when an event is reserved and a permit issued, and specifically what area is covered by that and what area is still available to the public. There may be times where the board is comfortable limiting access to that DuPage River Trail pedestrian bridge or a segment of the DuPage River Trail for an event that's approved and permitted, but there may be times where that area is not needed and we want to put the applicant on notice, hey, there might be joggers and bikers and folks coming through. So, but certainly, your point is well taken that that, the intent isn't necessarily evident and that section can use some refinement. Just think about that, how we handle that if somebody has a problem, because it's not clear. Overall, things are great document. They got a tremendous amount of detail in there that supports all of it. It's stuff we've learned in the past with Settlers Park. You modify it appropriately for a different kind of a area, that's actually done.
I'm just, I want to make one point here too. Mr. Epley could not be here this evening because he had prior commitments. Ed Arter is here also from the Riverfront Foundation that if you want to say a few things, if we've missed anything, but Rob and I had a conversation on the points that we mentioned today, and I shared with him what I was going to just bring up and bring forward. So I think we're, he was pretty much in agreement of what was going on here anyway, and I know John's been working with him, so.
I think there has to be also, everything is going to go through management services. We're going to have to have some sort of a communicative line between that and the riverfront that this month or this week has been reserved so that we don't have two clashes of reserving, and just so it's understood that if it goes all through management services, fine, but they have to be apprised of what's going on, because otherwise, you know, we could get into a little conflict.
It's very similar to how we handle the reservations now for the other facilities. Mostly email, but phone calls will be made, you know, for someone that's outside of our email string, but for the most part, it'll be arranged like we do now. We're the central location for the application and the deposits and the insurance and things of that nature, but once we get into an event that's happening, it kind of does get passed off to the parties that organize it. So if the police need to be involved or planning, they start to take the lead, and we just make sure that all the documentation is there and ready to go.
John, I had a couple of questions, and piggybacking off of what Trustee Lamb and the mayor had said, with regards to the property, the village owns that property, right? And the riverfront acts as a 501(c)(3) with regard to that property that the village owns, correct?
Correct. The Plainfield Riverfront Master Plan area is entirely under public ownership. There are sections of the master plan area that are owned by the Plainfield Park District, so it's not 100% owned by the village of Plainfield, but the master plan itself provides a vision for improvement of 100% publicly owned land.
But the majority is owned by the village. Does the Riverfront Foundation share its books and its policies with the village for the property that it owns?
Well, the bylaws for the Riverfront Foundation call for a trustee, village trustee, to be one of the 15, currently 15 directors, as well as one of the members of the Plainfield Township Park District Board of Commissioners. So the bylaws require a participation from the village, and I think as a policy, they've made available their financial records, you know, willingly. So I'm confident that, in making this statement, I'm not speaking on behalf of the foundation, but I'm confident that there would not be a hesitation or an issue in providing that information.
Okay. And then the, does the riverfront have to submit a yearly request to use the village property under your new plan or not? They're an outside entity. This is a village plan. Do they have to submit their wishes to use it for the year and the different things that they want to do so there are no conflicts?
If I can provide two answers to that, I think relative to any events or activities of the Plainfield Riverfront Foundation, it would be staff's estimation that they would be subject to this policy. And in fact, there's kind of a tiered recognition of priority, how potentially conflicting events or events that would be for the same period would be addressed. The village is the top priority, and then specific to this policy, we made the Riverfront Foundation as the next, you know, highest priority in the order. So that's specific to any single use request for an event, fishing tournament or, you know, any type of event the foundation might have. I think a second question you may have, or a second bit of information relative to your question, is the building itself is currently being used as the office space for the Riverfront Foundation and for meetings, regular meetings of the board of directors and so forth. So I think that would be appropriate to address separately. I don't know that that's, we wouldn't issue a permit and have, you know, in the management services calendar, you know, from eight to five, Monday through Friday, or, you know, I think you get the gist of what I'm saying, but I certainly acknowledge the, you know, the spirit of your question there of use of the village-owned property and...
If it's a village-owned property and we're requiring everybody else to get all these permits, if the riverfront is a separate organization from the village but just uses the village property, I think they should go through the same process as everybody else, just to make it fair across the board that there's no funny business going on. And one more thing on the, I would hate to limit alcohol sales because festivals like the Brewers Fest and things like that, I wouldn't want to limit that. I think we would, we'd limit the multiple uses for that property significantly by doing that. Thanks.
That all has to go through the trustees and the mayor for approval anyway, so. That all has to go through the trustees and the mayor for approval anyway, so. You're totally correct.
As far as the direction this is going, I do like it. I do not have any problems with anything that, you know, has been brought forward here this evening. One conflict though that I see is I believe this board adopted a policy to close our parks at a certain time. I remember voting no on that and I'd want to see if we need to bring that back up and modify that because if we're going to have events at a park that our policy says closes at a certain time, that, I think that's a problem. It's housekeeping. I don't think it's the end of the world, but I think we need to bring that ordinance back then. That's it. Thank you.
My comments, I think it's a positive thing if we can get use out of a park and more people in the community can enjoy it. I think that's always a positive thing. The couple of comments on what you were asking about Jonathan, as far as the alcohol, the service of alcohol. I would support that with obviously limited and controlled service. The question that I would have outside of that is if somebody has an event or reserves it and they're not necessarily like serving for a fundraiser or anything like that, would they still be eligible to bring their own? Or would that not be allowed? I don't know if that's clarified in the, in the document.
I, I think there are a couple of different circumstances where that could be proposed. One might be if an event were catered and potentially the catering company would have the appropriate license and the village could require that. Proof of, proof of the liquor licensing, tram shop insurance and so forth. But more of a backyard barbecue with coolers and a B-1-BOB situation. You know, I would defer to the mayor and the clerk. I, I suspect that we would look for the appropriate licensing, but again, I should not.
I'm just saying we might want to clarify that, that's all. Whether it's, you know, whether that's eligible. Because people might say, hey, I'm going to have a picnic out there, show up with a bunch of coolers and then they get themselves in trouble, that's all. And then the other thing was number 15. It talks about, and I think Trustee Lamb brought it up and I still wasn't clear on it. So you had mentioned, I think in six, such as wedding receptions. But then 15, it says, "All activities taking place in the park must be open to the public and all citizens." So I don't know if that matches. So in other words, if I'm having a wedding reception, I don't know that I want just people showing up at the park at my wedding reception. But I don't, I don't know if that was the intent or if it just needs to be clarified, that's all.
Your, your example actually points out a deficiency in the draft. I struggled with how to articulate this. We don't want any village-owned property allowed for a use that is discriminatory. But certain events, you know, are ticketed or restricted access. So to use the Midwest Brewers Fest as an example, the intent is to put the requirement on the operator that when they sell tickets or provide access to the event, that they can't discriminate that access on the basis of any, you know, protected class.
Well, that makes sense.
But I guess for a private event or a wedding reception is, you're pointing out a flaw in the.
Okay, that's why, that's why I think it just needs clarification. So you said your backyard barbecue, the wedding reception, a picnic, family reunion, whatever. I don't know that people want non-family members showing up to a family reunion.
John, couldn't you do that administratively through a permit process or an approval process? As long as it's done the right way, when they submit the application. I mean, as long as we're consistent with the approvals, I mean, that would avoid the whole discriminatory act.
I think this is, this is an area where my homework isn't 100% done. So I think with the benefit of legal counsel's review as well, I can have a stronger response in the future.
Are there any other comments or questions? If not, then we'll proceed with the next item on the workshop agenda, DuPage River Study Results.
Thank you. We have Ahmad Sumara from the U.S. Army Corps here tonight to give a brief update on the DuPage River Study. He's going to go over some of the milestones that the study has accomplished and where that's at and what the next steps will be. And with that, I'll turn the mic over to.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Ahmad Sumara. I've been here before. I'm very happy to be back, keep coming and giving you an update of the study that the U.S. Army Corps is partake in getting the feasibility study for the DuPage River watershed in the two counties of Will and DuPage County. So I'm going to go, the next few slides, you've seen them before, just an overview. This is DuPage River and its major tributaries. And we, basically the purpose is flood, flood risk management. So, and any flooding that actually takes place from overbank and backwater flooding. So, next slide. This is a, about a 353 square mile study and goes through the municipalities of Will and DuPage, about 29 and about residents, about 900 and about 350 would be from Will County. So, next. It's cost shared. This, the core for them, for us at the U.S. Army Corps to do projects, we have to cost share with a local entity. The cost share for this feasibility report is 50/50 and it's been, at this point, being done with Will County and DuPage County. Illinois Department of Natural Resources attends our meeting, but they are not actually part in the funding. Next. The objective is again to reduce the risk of flooding and damage for structures and minimize any impacts on critical structures and maximize of nature-based features. That's part of the planning that we do, is to also look for those features. Next. The study actually, it's, we have done the first and second items, the public NEPA scoping period, which is, was in December 2015. And we gathered a lot of information from, from Will County and DuPage County to basically develop the scope of our, of our study. We believe that we're on, we're on, we will have a draft feasibility report sometime in May. Actually, the last time I, I came here and presented, that was January. But we, we kind of, the effort of developing the hydraulic and hydrology is taken a little longer than, than we actually estimated. So, so that, that pushed it from January to, to May. But we should be able to have a draft report in May. That would actually, what we, the next process is to actually, in May, to make the report public, have agencies review and have the public review it and gather comments. Now, I don't want to say that we're just going to go away and get a report in May. We are actually working with Will County, DuPage County and, and some of the municipalities that are actually, Will County is, the way Will County actually operates is the municipalities are a lot more involved than, than just the Drainage Board of Will County. So we actually hold meetings with the municipalities and we bring them up to date. The next, let's go to the next slide. Those are some of the benefits, actually. I mean, if, if we feel the only thing that we would do for this is the study and not go into implementation, we will actually, we have surveyed all the Will Counties, bridges, DuPage County from all the way to the south to DuPage County. We, Will County will have a hydraulic and hydrology model by the end of this feasibility study. They, from, from what we gathered, that the earliest one that we could think of was in the 70s. So this will happen once the hydraulic and hydrology model is complete. And definitely, there is a lot of sites that are potential for, for us to actually implement work. Next slide. What we've done since the last time, we actually developed subcommittees because we wanted to make sure that our work is being done with everybody's involved. It's not just the corps doing things and hand them out to the locals to actually just review them. And you can, yes, you can see that Randy is part of the Subcommittee on Environmental. So the main, the main one, these are the hydraulic and hydrology and the NEPA, which is the National Policy Act that we have to follow to basically permit ourselves. Data collection, which is very important to get the data, include all the structures that are in, in Will County and DuPage County. And then plan formulation and economics. Because a lot of the sites that will, will actually be, a lot of the work that we will be doing is going to actually rely on the benefit cost ratio for, for these sites. You know, what, what we're going to be actually constructing or implementing and what the benefit is going to come. Next, this, the next couple of slides is those subcommittees' updates. The H&amp;H, as I, as I mentioned, that is, that is taking a little longer than what we estimated. DuPage County actually, the 50/50 cost share also can not have to always, have to be in cash. DuPage County is doing in-kind services. They are actually doing the hydrology and hydraulic model in DuPage County themselves. We are doing the, we're doing the hydrology modeling for Will County because DuPage County elected to use FEQ as the software for hydraulics. And Will County is more comfortable with the HECRAZ modeling. So that, that, so that is being actually developed now and we should be, we should be completing the hydraulic and hydrology model by end of October. At one point in the, in our estimation, it was sometime in July. But I think right now, it's going to take us till the end of October to get that done. We have completed the survey work, which is, goes into actually developing these, these models too. So, next slide. Plan formulation, that's the, the team that actually puts all plans, like if, if a site can have a levee, if a site can have a reservoir, if a site can have a combination of both, that is the committee that actually works on that. Data collection is the, the subcommittee that actually works on gathering all the structured data and the first, first flood, I mean, structured data and parcel data and make sure that we captured everything because once we get the hydraulic and hydrology model working, then we can actually get the economics from knowing how many structures are being, being impacted and what cost that would, would. So they are working on, on getting all that data between Will County and Cook County, the data collection. And next one, if we go to the next, that's Environmental NEPA, which is basically our National Environmental Policy Act that we have to follow and we have to make sure that there's no, what lens, we are not into what lens, we are making sure that there's no sites that had historical significance that we, you know, we, we, so those are the things that we would actually be doing here. If we pick site, that team will make sure that the site is for us to go forward with. Next. And I showed, at this point, we have not really gone into bringing down, that's the, that, this is the damages, which is that's what we actually know happens in this, in this area. And the next slide is the sites that we are actually proposing to, to look into further of, in Plainfield. And next slide. As I said, the schedule for us for this study is May for the draft report. And then, once we get the draft report, that is going to go to agency review. The feasibility report is projected to get complete and that's what the chief's report means in July 2018. Next slide. And that's, any questions? We really have not yet dove into like this site and coming back and having discussion on, okay, this is a site, we think that it works or doesn't work. That's when things going to actually have back and forth and discussions once we really know what sites, what costs, what benefits. And sometime if it's borderline, I'm very sure your voice is going to be saying, well, maybe we need this, we should keep this and not take this off the table. So I believe the next few months, I would say between September, October and November, where that work is going to start coming in, in play. And sites are being, should we keep the site or not keep the site for whatever reason that we have. So I'm hoping in three months, I have a lot more for you. And I could say, this is a site in Plainfield that, that, that we will actually have that site looked at and maybe we'll have a plan for it.
Just to chime in for a minute, one of the important notes here is, is that a study, a comprehensive study of the river for the entire area of the village hasn't been completed since the 1970s. So it's been quite a while. And, and as the chief can here attest, we've had several floods in the past 20 years or so and we've experienced that. So we know how it can be, how we have to deal with those things. But we don't really have the data to show what items would help improve or mitigate or protect different properties. So this is the beginning of the study. They're, the Army Corps is not asking for any money tonight, which is nice. I'm sure that Management Services appreciates that. And they are going to complete the study. After the draft report comes out, I think it's important for the board to take a look at it, review it, make comments on areas because there are areas like the Riverfront property may be impacted with some improvements to help provide either additional comp storage or channelize the river in some way. There are a number of different things that can be done. But the items that propose, construction items within our community, although they're probably many, many years off, we should look at that and evaluate that very carefully. So tonight was more of an update and I appreciate especially the timetables too as well. But we're pretty happy that we're actually going to have a comprehensive study of the river that's been done within the last 30-some years or so. So with that, I'm sure we'll answer any questions related to that too as well.
Is the ultimate goal to get this data in front of Congress for funding to try to alleviate this because it's such a large area?
The goal is to have a report that identifies sites that the corps believes that there is benefit and, and for the nation, there's benefit for the nation to go in and do these projects. And, and that report, if it's approved, then would go to Congress for funding, yes. And the funding will be actually, at that point, 35/75, 35/65. So this is 50/50, but when we go into implementation, it goes 65, the corps, and 35 is the local entity that is actually sponsoring the, the project.
Alan, in these past floods, have, has the village kept record of how much the total dollar cleanup would cost? That, I think that would help us in the future if we have to actually make financial decisions on this.
The, the dollar figure and damage, we'd have to reach out to some of the other organizations that, that. that track that because it becomes more of a regional item. But as far as records go back to 1996, which was the largest flood that has ever been experienced on record within the community, we do have some aerial documentation of those areas that flooded at that time. And there's been some mitigation that's been done. But again, these studies that show what occurs basically when you get a six inch or an eight inch or 12 inch rain are very, very valuable in trying to protect properties in the future and plan for mitigation too as well. So I don't know if the chief wants to add anything to that as well, but.
I can't speak for '96 because I was a newbie on the department. I was kind of in shock myself, but for the 2008 flood and the 2013 floods, which were also federally declared disasters, we do have the paperwork I know readily available for that at the Police Department. And as Alan mentioned, based on these past events, we've worked with the National Weather Service and the United States Geological Service to have additional monitors installed in the river to help us with the flooding. And just based on our knowledge and history, we've been able to tell, you know, when properties will flood based on rainfall, where it's falling at, how much previous rainfall we've had. And in the process over the last few major floods as well, some of the properties, some of the houses have been removed because of mitigation remedies, if you will, to move some of those properties that were flooding all the time. So we do have documentation on almost all that type of stuff.
And that includes the man-hours spent by the village as well as the property damage?
That's correct.
Randy is the village representative of the Will County Stormwater Committee. That seems to have got myself appointed to the same committee as a representative of one of the districts, if you will, not I don't represent the village. But one of the things to talk about the Will County Stormwater Committee, if you remember, is putting me on the plan committee substitute. I'd like to.
Sure.
I never found out how to get hold of them, so maybe you could put it in. I like to get involved because that's certainly where my expertise lies. What do we do about some of the things we discover?
Do you have a card? Can I take your card? If you have one?
Yeah. I think I have one.
Yes. And did we say plan formulation? Is that the committee that you, the plan formulation committee?
Plan formulation, yeah.
Okay. Sure.
That's where my experience is, 10 years of playing around with that.
Sure.
We can chisel out another card for you.
I remember you mentioned that at the storm meeting, Will County.
Give me the credit card. You know why? Because that's Randy. He knows where to find me.
That's fine. If you could email me that information, I will definitely add you to the list and inform the chair to add you to their meetings.
Are there any other comments?
I've got Trustee Ratchett's card, but I'm lost. I'm making you one. I just crossed my name out and I gave you.
I'll come by and take it.
Well, we thank you, thank you for the board's attention and input too as well. And we'll have some more information here as the draft report becomes available to the board and to the public as well. So we'll keep you apprised. Thank you.
And one note that I mentioned, once the hydraulic and hydrology model is about to be complete, I think we're having a meeting with the municipalities to go over that with them, so. Thank you.
Reminders?
September the 5th, our office will be closed for Labor Day. September the 6th, planning commission meeting at 7 o'clock. September the 8th is Historic Preservation at 7:00. September 12th, there's our next committee to the whole and our next Village Board meeting will be September 19.
We're seeking motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.